Members, good afternoon. We have a quorum. So, we now called the meeting, ordered the meeting of this finance committee. This is a special meeting. We have four sessions. We have up to six thirty P M. today. The purpose of the special meeting is to examine the estimates of expenditure of the government. This is to ensure that the government is seeking a provision no more than is necessary for the execution of the approved policies. A reminder to members, your questions should be directly related to the draft estimate. And when you put questions, please quote the serial number at the top right corner. If you do not get a chance to follow up on the written replies from the government, you can put in your supplementary questions in writing. And please get your written questions in by seven P M. this evening. Your supplementary questions should be based on the government's written replies. We now begin the session on the Civil Service Bureau. We now welcome Mrs. Ingrid Yern, the Secretary for the Civil Service, to join us. Now, members who would like to speak, please press the request to speak button now. Now over to the Secretary for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Chairman. Among the matters related to the civil service in the twenty twenty five to twenty six draft estimates of expenditure, I would like to focus on the following points. First, the civil service establishment. We have implemented the zero growth policy in the civil service establishment since twenty twenty one to twenty two, within the overall establishment controlled at the level not exceeding that as at the end of March twenty twenty one, meaning a hundred ninety-six thousand posts. With the concerted efforts of bureaus and departments, the civil service establishment has been shrinking each year. By the thirty first of March twenty twenty six, the overall civil service establishment is projected to be down to about a hundred ninety-three thousand posts, meaning about three thousand posts fewer on a cumulative basis. To better utilize manpower resources, we will trim the civil service establishment further, reducing it by two percent each in twenty twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty twenty seven to twenty eight, based on the establishment of the preceding financial year. By the first of April twenty twenty seven, about ten thousand posts are to be expected to be deleted from the civil service establishment within this term of government. The resources saved will count towards the two percent savings of the recurrent expenditure of the departments concerned under the Financial Services and the Treasury Bureau's Productivity Enhancement Program. In addition, the government has also proposed in the budget that for twenty twenty five to twenty six, the executive authorities, the legislature, the judicial, and members of the district councils take pay freeze. This applies to the entire civil service. The civil service pay freeze took effect on the first of April twenty twenty five. I understand the recent concerns about over the civil service establishment. Some people think that since the current vacancy rate stands at about ten percent, cutting the vacancies directly will achieve greater savings in expenditure. I would like to take this opportunity to clarify the matter. The reduction in the civil service establishment proposed in the budget aims to optimize manpower arrangements through reorganization and reprioritization of work while maintaining the efficiency of public services. To this end, all posts, both filled and vacant, will be reviewed to ascertain their necessity. It does not mean that we can meet our goal simply by deleting all vacant posts. Posts that are essential to the provision of public services, such as air traffic control officers and station officers, will be retained. Their recruitment will continue. Posts currently occupied are not immune from deletion. They may be deleted after the transfer of the incumbents and redistribution of work. In fact, with the growing workload of the government, it requires much effort in planning for departments to cut expenditure and shrink their establishment at the same time. However, this is also a good opportunity for them to think outside the box and adopt innovative thinking to enhance efficiency and effectiveness. The government will continue to promote the adoption of management measures and digitalization among departments with a view to optimizing the use of civil service manpower resources and enhancing efficiency. By reprioritizing their work, redeploying internal resources, streamlining procedures, and leveraging technology. In doing so, the lean of civil service can continue to deliver high-quality public services. The second point is about civil service training. The Civil Service College will continue to take forward various initiatives to strengthen the governance capabilities of the civil service. The relevant estimated expenditure is about two hundred fifty-five million dollars. In twenty twenty five to twenty six, the college will launch the Governance Talent Development Program, proposed in the policy address to nurture governance talent with a macro perspective and professional leadership skills. It will also keep enhancing technology application as part of civil service leadership training. To give departmental leaders a better grasp of the impact of technological development on public policymaking and delivery, this will equip them for leadership responsibilities in guiding their departments to leverage technology, including optimizing departmental information technology systems, better utilizing big data and artificial intelligence to transform public services, and arranging suitable training for departmental staff. On the medical and dental benefits for civil servants, the government will continue to honor its contractual obligation as the employer by providing medical benefits for serving civil servants, pensioners, and other eligible persons. The medical services provided by the hospital authority as part of the medical benefits have been included in the overall provision allocated to the H A. Family clinic services and dental services are provided by the Department of Health, including two pilot schemes, one on provision of dental scaling services via private dental organizations, and the other on receiving designated dental services at the medical institution in Shenzhen. For these services, a provision of around one thousand one hundred fifty-eight million dollars has been reserved. Also, we have reserved about one thousand seven hundred and sixty-six million dollars to cover the expenditure on reimbursement on medical expenses, which cannot be fully anticipated. The Civil Service Bureau will continue to implement various policies and initiatives, such as strengthening civil service training, co-organizing the civil service staff exchange collaboration schemes with the G B A, and also launching the pilot schemes on dental services as well as childcare leave for governance services. Chairman, that concludes my opening remarks. I welcome questions from members. Now I will read out the line of members waiting to speak. Mister Lam Chuen Sing, Doctor Lu Wei Kwok, Doctor Frank Ngan, Mister Leitong Kwok, Miss Kam Man Kean, Professor Chow Man Kong, Doctor Tae Chi Yun, Miss Nick Se Lam, Mister Dennis Lo, Mister Kwak Wai Kung, Mister Brave Chan, Mister Chen Haok Feng, Mister Michael Lee, Mister Chow Su Chong, Doctor So Chuen Wing, Mrs. Regina Ip, followed by Doctor Wendy Hong. Four minutes for each member, questions and answers inclusive. I will enforce time limit strictly. Mister Lam Chuen Sing. C S B O one one. It's about the controlled grades. These are probably very outdated post typists, for example, and you also have the supervisor of typing services. Establishment for officers, but the strength is zero. The C S B said it has been calling on these departments to delete the establishment. Why are these posts still there? Do those departments want to keep the establishment for the resources without hiring people? That means wasting resources. So many pieces of legislation have been passed. Do we have enough officers at the F E H D? Do we have enough lifeguards to maintain services? Those grades are short of officers, and that affects public services. So how do we make sure there is no mismatch in the establishment so that we can maintain public services without waste? So for these controlled grades, they shouldn't be reviewed just when you have a fiscal deficit. You should be reviewing these grades, say, every three years. Let's see if we can put something else in the controlled grades. Add grades to this, and when you ask departments to delete these posts, they do so. Now, C S B O one three. It's about technology adoption and use of A I. The question is about the savings in manpower and the five-day work week. I only got the reply from the Labor Department. Other departments said they do not maintain the stats. Did those departments try the tech but failed? Meaning, did they fail to streamline procedures and save resources even with the technology? Are there ways for the C S B to keep an eye on those departments on the use of technology such that these departments can streamline procedures? A I should be more than just a slogan. The C S B should be playing a role to monitor the use of A I by departments to make sure the use of A I is making a difference. Secretary, so two questions, one controlled grades and two manpower savings through A I. Thank you. Now for these controlled grades, we have rigorous control over recruitment and promotion. Unless there is approval from the C S B, those posts cannot be filled and no promotion can be given. Now take typists. Those typists are not just working on their typing machines. They enter data for their departments. They use computer software, word processing software for their work. Now, we have also regraded more than two thousand typists into clerical grades. The establishment is there. But then for some posts, the strength is zero. Now we have a goal to make two percent cut in each of twenty twenty six to twenty seven and twenty twenty seven to twenty eight. We have asked those departments to remove those grades as a matter of priority for those two years. For grades without strength, we will tell Legco when we propose to delete those posts. Now on the other question. Many departments adopt A I, and they manage to save manpower. Take the C and S D, Census and Statistics Department. They use A I-based models to compile trade statistics. And they have reduced the need for manpower by forty percent, but they already, they are already on the five-day work week model. They simply reassigned their officers to other duties. Other departments are taking a similar approach. Doctor Lu Wei Kwok. Thank you, Chairman. C S B O seven three. So my question is it's about the work departments. I asked about the establishment of the professional grade officers at those work departments. I asked about the wastage of those officers. The wastage rate is not on the low side. Even for the lowest buildings department, two-point-three percent. The highest one, planning department, six-point-one percent. Now from the Secretary's reply, I've heard that each bureau and their departments have to make the two percent cut per year, but it's not a broad-brush approach. But the government is taking a pragmatic approach, meaning it looks at the circumstances of each department. It looks at the surface demand and make pragmatic changes. I support this approach. And I have this question. This question is shared by many other people. We have many vacancies in the civil service establishment. So people think it should be easy to get rid of ten thousand posts. You just stop hiring, and that's done. So can I invite the Secretary to explain? At a private firm, you don't hire someone, you don't have the expenditure. But you don't save money just by not hiring. Whereas in the civil service, when you remove a post from the establishment, will the government save money simply by not hiring? Will that help you achieve the goal of raising revenue and cutting costs? Or for Secretary, how do you, can you, how do you reflect the implication?
Well, with the reduction in establishment, there would definitely be savings. At the beginning of the year, the remuneration for the posts will be given to the department for calculation. If the post is vacant, that means the department will have to find other ways to have the work done, say, for example, by doubling sideways. If the acting lasts for a certain period of time, there will be acting pay. On other occasions, retired civil servants are hired to fill the post and do the work. Where do we find the resources? The resources come from the allocation for the remuneration for the vacant post. If the post is deleted, then there, then there won't be any allocation for remuneration for that post. The deletion of the post, whether it's filled or not, will end in savings. The government will actually save. Thank you. I think it's a very valid explanation. So it's not the case that you're just giving us figures, juggling the figures. There is an actual saving. There are lots of projects in the pipeline, including the northern metropolis. Of course, we now have infrastructure first in a development. So the staff members in the works department are working very hard under a very heavy workload. I hope that you will take that into consideration. We don't want our development to be impeded. Thank you. Next, Mister Ngan Man Yu, Doctor Ngan Man Yu. I would like to follow up on C S B eighty-three in relation to the application of technology in the civil service college. I would like to know about this effectiveness. I'm very glad to learn that the C S C actively promotes a sharing of experience in the use of technology. It says that after the courses, there'll be questionnaire, there'll be sharing sessions, there will be a few work to gauge the effectiveness of these courses. So how do you find, how do you assess if the officers have applied what they've learned into the line of work? That is, that they make good use of new technology or existing technology, that these technologies are incorporated into the work procedure in the government? Secretary. We have not sent anyone from the Civil Service Bureau to these exchange programs, but there are staff members from other departments and bureaus. When they have completed these courses, they are required to conduct a sharing session of what they've learned and observed in these sharing sessions. Say, for example, in the planning department, transport department, and the environmental protection department, staff members having attended these exchange courses share with their colleagues what they have learned from what they've seen in mainland cities. Of course, it may not be an instant application of what they have learned. By sharing what they've learned with others, the other colleagues are also learning. Doctor Ngan. In the reply, it says that when it comes to cross-departmental sharing of successful cases and experiences in the application of technology, it's not really anything to do with exchange, it's about the use of application of a technology in Hong Kong. I find it strange that you don't send anyone from your bureau to learn about the application of technology. I was talking about these staff exchange programs, that is, the one with other cities. We have general grade staff members in our bureau. If they work in other departments, say, for example, executive officers or administrative officers, they attend these courses under, well, through their respective department as well. Perhaps I will defer to the head of the college in relation to the application of technology or A I. Mister Kwok. We have organized training courses covering A I and different technologies. Well, that includes the generative A I application, robotics, analytics, video analytics, tax analytics, innovation of industries, et cetera. As to whether there are actual examples of the use of what they've learned from the courses, I don't have anything off the top of my head. But I can tell you that there is an actual case in the college. When we applied resources to develop the information systems, on the thirty first of March, we have launched the first phase of the learning system. It will be fully launched in August this year. We have training offices in the college. They are making use of generative A I. The technology is used on word processing, compilation of teaching materials, supporting materials of online learning courses. We will continue to do it along this way. Next, Mister Leitong Kwok. I have two parts in my question. The first one is zero four three in relation to provision of medical services to civil service. When it comes to medicine in the specialist clinics, the waiting time for new cases is rather long. It seems that it's doing better now. Eight weeks is reduced to one, one week in Prince of Wales Hospital. If Queen Elizabeth Hospital, a hundred and forty to seven weeks, however, for Queen Mary Hospital, it's lengthened from seven weeks to thirteen. Secretary, do you have any ways to reduce the waiting time for Queen Mary? For G O P C, government civil service quota, according to the information supplied for, supplied by the bureau, utilization is around sixty percent over three years. Is there any way to make better use of the remaining forty percent? For example, allow the use of the, of the quotas by other eligible persons? The other part of my question is zero four four. The Secretary said that there will be a reduction of about forty, about ten thousand posts. According to the reply here, says that for directorate grade, there is no reduction. There are some deletions in time-limited posts. For the C E D D, there will be a deletion of five time-limited posts. Will you consider amalgamating the department with the, with the bureaus to reduce, reduction, to, to reduce posts, just like what you did in the deficits a few years ago? If not, do you have any other alternatives? Secretary. For civil service clinics, they have their own mode of operation. I understand that the Queen Elizabeth Hospital, they have, they have upgraded their work process so that waiting time is reduced without affecting quality of service. In relation to Queen Mary Hospital, there are more patients. We'll closely monitor the situation with the hospital authority. If there is a persistent issue, we will look into ways to make changes or identify other alternatives to reduce waiting time. Civil service quota for medical services. The objective of the quota system is to enable civil servants to see the doctor as soon as possible so that they can return to work. The unused quota under our plan will not be open for use for other eligible persons. Say, for example, their dependents, that is, these discs. We will monitor the situation to see what the utilization rate is, is like before we make changes. Mister Li also asked about our establishment. We asked departments and bureaus to review their establishment to see what posts are necessary. It's not the case that directorate posts will not be deleted. In twenty-four, twenty-five, there is a drop by twenty directorate posts. Some of them are time-limited posts that have expired, whereas others are deleted. We do not want to amalgamate departments and departments for the sake of reduction of posts. There may be merits in amalgamation. We see that the Housing Department and the Education Bureau have the department and the bureaus amalgamated. There are merits. But at the same time, there are other operations. Under one bureau, there are many departments of different functions at work at the same time. We'll take stock of the situation before we consider it. Next, Miss Kam Man Kean.
Given the current situation, we need to trim civil servants. In the opening remark, the Secretary said that, well, vacancies may not be deleted. Filled posts may not be kept. So it is, it's a logic of, well, if it is not white, it may not be black or vice versa. You don't have to tell us that. What I'd like to know is if there is a concrete plan requiring departments or bureaus to give you a reduction plan. You need to tell us when these will be done. In zero three three and three, zero three two, well, other than the police department, for other departments, say, for example, Education Bureau, the F E H D, the number of vacancies stands at over a thousand. Is it necessary to keep these persistently vacant posts? Is it the case that you have outsourced a large amount of work? And if, if that is the case, what's going on? So do you require departments to come up with a plan according to a deadline? The reply from the administration was that in twenty twenty four, there are eight civil servants that have received a section twelve notification under the streamlined mechanism. And in twenty, and in twenty twenty-two, sorry, in between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four, there are twenty-three such civil servants. So is it actually streamlined?
G nineteen has something to say about the incremental point. In zero three three, you said in the past five years, sixty-five non-director civil servants do not receive the increment because of poor performance. However, when it comes to directorate posts, you said you have not kept statistics. Why? Can you give me the the number of your second question is also zero three, three, two? Secretary, three questions. In relation to deletion of post, in twenty twenty six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven to twenty-seven, it's two percent per year. In twenty twenty seven, we ask departments to give us their plans in the middle of the year. We will, we will look at the plans submitted in the budget next year. The figures will be reflected in the establishment. The savings from the deletion of posts will be reflected in the total civil service remuneration in the summary. For twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we will ask departments to submit their plans next year. The figures will be reflected in the budget in twenty twenty seven. You ask about performance management of civil servants. In August twenty twenty-three, we, we have streamlined the section twelve action. Well, that's actually September. So far, fifteen civil servants have been, have been issued the notification. Under the cumbersome and lengthy Under the cumbersome and lengthy old system, on average, every year, um there were only two point four people. Now, over eighteen months, there are fifteen. It's actually not ideal. I'm not saying that we're happy with this figure. We ask departments to actually take action to tackle subperformance. But under the streamlined uh mechanism, a lot more departments have used it. The other question is about the increment. Well, the figures quoted is not ideal, not to me either. We're cons- considering other ways to enhance civil service performance management. Increment is an incentive to encourage better performance, that's one way. The question about directorate posts. Well, the increment will only happen once every two years. We have not kept the statistics um of the number of cases without increment covering just a directorate post.
Professor Chabing Kong, thank you, Chairman. C S B O two three. As we've heard, each department will have to submit a plan to make that two percent cut altogether. There will be a cut of ten thousand posts. So my question is, how do we make sure that with this trimming down exercise, trimming exercise, that those departments will not simply add more non-civil service contracts to fill the posts? Because doing that would make this trimming exercise meaningless, it would be simply a numbers game. Now, apart meet from meeting target and using A I, we also need to streamline procedures. Because only then you can get the work done with fewer officers. I know the C S B has asked departments to review their service model when there are vacancies before filling the vacancies. How long does the review take? Will the C S B be in charge or do the departments do the, the review? Does the C S B commission outside bodies for such reviews? Of course, each department will not want to cut their own establishment when they are asked to do their own review. Getting outside bodies to do the review may lead to a more scientific approach, you may see a real difference in trimming the civil service. Now, on the point of, of trimming the directorate establishment, proposals come in, the government takes for, takes our support for granted. Cutting the ten thousand posts will be a drop in the ocean. When you look at the change in the directorate establishment, departments will be reluctant to trim their own establishment. Would it make a bigger difference if the directorate officers take charge of the work? Secretary, please be brief. Now, the N C S C staff, we ask each department to make the two percent cut to their establishment. The F S T B also asks departments to cut, make two percent cut to their current expenditure. So that means fewer resources at the disposal of departments. That means when departments hire officers, whether it's N C S C officers or not, departments will have to be smart, otherwise they will be short of resources. Now, on streamlining procedures, in the supplement to the policy address from last year, we stated that we will work with the digital policy office to look at the workflow of departments for room for streamlining. Some departments may be under fire from the public for such issues. So we will work with those departments and bureaus. And when we do identify scope, when there is need to lead, need for I T solutions, but the departments have to take the action, we will get involved. Or when you need an I N T system to replace manpower, outside consultants take part in the process. Now I turn to the directorate establishment. Each time an establishment proposal reaches logical, that proposal has gone through our internal control procedures. The C S B and the F S T B have examined a proposal at a high level before we submit that proposal to logical. Doctor Take Yuen. Two questions, C S B O four two. It's about the directorate supernumerary posts. The secretary just told us about the zero growth policy in the civil service establishment. But there's a back door. And that is directorate officers outside the establishment, supernumerary posts. There were ninety eight last year, this year we still expect seventy three. So my question is, the government talks about boosting efficiency, reorganizing, redeploy resources, using resource, using technology. Given that, why are we still hiring, why are we still hiring supernumerary directorate officers? Don't tell me about a heavy workload, that problem affects everyone. Yesterday, we talked about the civil chief executive's office, about their manpower. They said they have a lean, lean staff, so there's still the room for them to redeploy officers. We already have a large civil surface, why do we still need supernumerary posts? Now, for the time limited posts, given our fiscal position, can we stop renewing those time limited posts? Now I turn to my second question, C S B O O one. It's about the civil service pay freeze. Now, there are two parts to the civil service pay adjustment. One, the incremental jump, and two, market conditions, meaning the economy, inflation, et cetera. We haven't heard anything about the second part. Civil servants will get their incremental jump, meaning for civil servants, they can still expect a pay rise. And that means a gap between what really happens and what the public expects. So has the government considered a pay freeze for senior civil servants and officials? Or even a pay cut? Of course, the officers to be affected may not be many, but that will send this message saying that officials and senior civil servants are willing to ride out the tough times together with the community. Has this been given thought? If this doesn't work, why? So question one, redeployment, and question two, pay freeze. Secretary. Doctor Take was trying to follow up on a point, so I would like to clarify this point once again. When we say a time limited supernumerary post, we're not talking about someone outside the establishment. A supernumerary post is within the establishment. When you see the establishment, that includes all these supernumerary posts. These are simply time limited directorate posts. We include these officers, so there's no back door. These posts are still within the establishment. Time limited posts exist because time limited tasks exist. We are fair in what we do. We don't just create a permanent post for a time limited task. Sometimes we see an ongoing need for a task, but we want to start by trying to set up a time limited post as a first step. And then we try to regularize that post later. What I can commit to here is that when the task is done, we will not renew the time limited post involved. And we can already see that some time limited posts will not be renewed once the work is done. But for other tasks, they're still there, the task has to be completed. Or when there is long term service need, we will seek to regularize those posts. Now I turn to the pay increment. We will we have noticed media reports about a pay rise, a modest pay rise in the community. The median wage rate is rising. We have to keep civil service posts attractive. Otherwise, we won't be able to get people to join the civil service, so we won't consider that option. Miss Nyxilam. C S B O four seven. It's about translation and interpretation services. So for twenty twenty four to twenty five, it's up by eleven point eight million dollars. The reply says it's mainly for emolument and training. So I find out more about how much we spend on emolument. We've been talking about the use of A I. Translation and interpretation is exactly where you can apply A I. Are there job functions where we can make greater use of A I? If we can use A I instead, to what extent can we apply A I to do those jobs? Now for C S B O eight three, we heard that for some posts, they can be regraded. Sorry, this is part two of my question, C S B O eight three. Now for officers who went on exchanges, they could tell their col- colleagues about their experience. But my question is, how far do these officers go in sharing their experience? Do frontline officers also hear from the experience? The problem I'm worried about is that the frontline coworkers are not aware of what's needed when only the mid-level or senior officers hear from the experience from exchanges. So two questions. So we have official languages officers and simultaneous interpreters. I don't have the breakdown at hand about the training expenses. But we have been actively exploring how much A I can do for us. But official languages officers don't just translate documents. They also give language advice. Language changes over time. So these officers compile glossaries and work on changes in document formats. They also polish documents. So for such tasks in the foreseeable future, we will still need people to do the work. Now, on officers who went on exchanges, those officers tell other people within the same grade about their experience. Those officers share their experience with coworkers within a reasonable range of colleagues. Because that experience may not be particularly helpful for frontline officers. But then, when it comes to officers who design procedures or use technology, the experience may be more helpful. Once you design a system, the frontline officers implement those systems.
Mister Dennis Lo, I would like to follow up on zero six eight and six nine. They are my questions. Zero six eight. In relation to the digital policy office that was the result of an amalgamation. It says in twenty twenty four, twenty five, there was an increase of staff members by eight hundred and eighty six, whereas O G C I O, there was a reduction of seven hundred and, seven hundred staff members. With the amalg- amalgamation, there is an additional hundred and thirty staff members. How come that there is an increase in manpower with the amalgamation? I'm sure that with that, resources will be pulled together. It should have been more effective. And another part of the question is, uh, well, how will the government make use of digitalization? In zero six eight nine, under the C S C, the Civil Service College, there are some mainland courses. Nine institutions are partner institutions. They organize national studies courses of about um five to twelve weeks. I see that the content includes national security, basic law, constitution, these are rather fundamental. If these courses are taking place on the mainland, how come the content is still so basic? Why not focus on mainland development, um experience of reform, policy implementation, relationship between the government and the general public? These are more specific areas. I think you need to review the content of the courses to make sure that they are, are more helpful to uh middle and senior management civil servants. The digital policy office is the result of two major departments. One is the O G C I O. The other one is a smaller department, is the efficiency office. I think the difference come from the establishment of the efficiency yeah unit. We will give you further information after the meeting. Understanding of the basic law, the constitution are not basic. Civil servants of different levels were, may have different levels of understanding. When I attend a course in the Chinese Academy of Governance, the, well, let me add this. The academy offers different courses for different different um grades. All these courses cover courses or talks about the basic law. I have attended the different levels of courses. The different courses will touch on different areas and offer different depth. That's why these courses are still there in the mainland courses, but they are different depending on the work experience and the level of the attendees. So these courses will stay. As time changes, the application of the basic law may be slightly, may change. We need to teach the latest um information to our staff members. Mister Kuo Wei Kong, well, we've asked about establishment and national studies. I would like to ask about zero three nine in relation to occupational safety. I asked for figures in relation to occupational injuries of among civil servants. It says that the inspection of the labor department is based on risk. They prioritize inspections based on the risk-based principle. For civil servants, then there will be visits, seminars, trainings to enhance the awareness of occupational safety among civil servants. However, we see over a thousand injury cases over the past three years in relation to three items, slip, trip, and four, the second category, injury from lifting objects, and the third category, struck by moving vehicle, all these three categories have over a hundred cases. There may be regular talks or seminars. There may be regular talks or seminars, but it doesn't help with bringing down the number of injuries. Is it the case that these activities are not targeted enough? As a result, staff members engage in these activities or um grades that work with. That engage in these activities and do not have the information they need from these regular activities. I also also ask about expenditure on occupational safety. Well, in twenty twenty five, twenty twenty four twenty five is a eight hundred and ten. Um thousand dollars, the the year before is four hundred thousand dollars and the year before there is five hundred and sixty thousand. This coming year is eight thousand, six hundred thousand, but it only covers about four thousand people. In twenty three twenty four, there was a drop in expenditure, four hundred thousand. But it jumped up to eight hundred and ten thousand in twenty four twenty five. Can you tell me why there is the figure has doubled? This is in relation to occupational safety education. Just now Mister Quo talked about the three common occupational injuries. They are indeed very common in the workplace. We have done a lot of work on education to draw the attention of staff members. However, these are very common injuries. I think it's. Very difficult to completely avoid that. For the third category struck by moving vehicle. Well, it's not just the the person who was struck. It's also about the other one, the one in the moving vehicle as well. It may not be prevented simply by occupational safety education. The next question is in relation to the increase in uh expenditure. Perhaps I will defer to the um Deputy Secretary. In twenty four twenty five, we have enhanced a training courses as well as other activities. That's why we have spent more. We have targeted courses as well, say, for example, prevention of wear and um. Wear and tear and degeneration of the upper limb and the lower limb. Mister Chen Yong, I would like to follow up on zero zero eight. In twenty four twenty five. There are. One thousand two hundred and twenty two posts being deleted. It's a difficult time, we expect the number to be higher. Of course, the workload for civil servant is high, we really appreciate their work. I see that there is a reduction of nine posts in the C S B. I would like to convert into the amount of savings. That's a question that members of the public may ask. On one hand, there may be a reduction of posts, on the other, there may be an increase in number of posts. Of course, what what we'd like to see is a reduction in savings as well as number of posts. So there may be a saving, uh even with an increase in manpower because of a flat um. Structure. Well, I see that when it comes to regulators. At these regulators, say, for example, for financial services, they offer a better remuneration compared to the private sector. Well, sometimes you don't have to offer a package that is twice or three times better than that in the private private sector. So if you can identify why certain posts offer a better remuneration. Then you will be in a better position to make a more make a leaner offer for for the same quality. I see that, well, there is a savings by one percent, there is seven hundred eighty five million dollars. But there is an increase in additional expenditure by about a hundred fifteen million. I now move on to number of vacancies. Well, there will be a deletion of ten thousand vacancies, but we we see that there are more than ten thousand vacancies. So what are the posts that have stopped hiring? And. So it's not just about making use of existing vacancies. There are other um alternatives that were by which you can save. I think secretary, you have to only answer some of the questions only. It's very difficult to make the conversion of savings from deletion of posts. We may have deleted posts, but at the same time. There is a horizontal um deployment, there is a difference. Between someone who is um more junior, less experienced, or um. One that we have to pay for a lower contribution for the M P F. So it's very difficult for us to tell you how much savings are involved. But I can tell you how many posts have been deleted. The general policy when it comes to civil service pay is to offer something that is comparable. With the private sector for the same posts. We say comparable because the functions are different and the attractiveness are different. But we would like to make it comparable, make the pay comparable. If we identified a big discrepancy, then we will conduct a review in relation to the particular grade. Currently, um there is a broad comparability of these different grades. Last one, Mister Chen Hafeng, I would like to ask about zero zero two and three, they are my questions. I asked how many posts can be saved as a result of the use of digitalization? Governments, the government has given me a very general. Uh answer that they have not kept the statistics. Um I don't find that acceptable. Every year, the government comes to us to ask for funding of um. Billions of dollars for digitalization. But if they can't give us. How it trims the civil service, I find that unacceptable. Perhaps you give us an idea. A certain amount of used in digitalization will save a certain number of posts. Reply number three. I see that most of the courses of C S C are for skills as well as national studies. Are there causes to change the mentality of civil servants? We have the impression that civil service, civil servants are not very. Are not full of um initiate initiatives. How can we change their mentality to make them more proactive? I will let the secretary answer all the questions before we wrap up this session. I defer to the head of the C S C for the second question, but I but before that I'll answer the first part. When we come to the electrical for a large amount of funding for computerization or. Uh information systems, we have to follow the procedure. Before the item can come to the electrical. In the process, the department will have to tell us roughly how many, how much in manpower can be saved? Or. Uh how much better the work can be carried out? With precision. Sometimes the manpower saved will be deployed to other additional areas, areas of work. Well, with the redeployment, there is no need for them to come to ask for an increase in manpower. Say, for example, for the C N S D, they use A I model to compile trade statistics. There is a savings in manpower by forty percent. Under the department, they have set up um two sections. One is in relation to social um data, the other one is social data development. Then they would have needed additional resources to set up the two sections. Sometimes it's difficult to see how much is saved in manpower because the saved manpower is deployed elsewhere.
So it's about the mindset of civil servants, that's the second question, over to you, Mister Quo. This question gets at the core of what we do. At the Civil Service College, we have put in place. A training framework, it's about the mindset of civil servants. The member asked about the work culture and serving the public. This is a core part of all our training. Now for mindset. Mindset is a part of training about skills and knowledge. It's about putting people first. Civil servants are trained on how to put people first in what they do. And we also promote the one government mindset. What this means is that. Different departments come together, they work together, and these are core elements in the mindset of our training. These elements. Are part of all the training we offer. And that's how we tell whether our training meets our goals, so that's my reply, thank you. So that concludes this session, our next session will start at ten after three, thank you.